Hey, evening everybody. Welcome to the city council study session. We are set for one agenda item that is our board and admission discussion. My thought is that we will start her up. Trying to come up with some consensus on appointments for the few positions that would be missed at our last meeting. And then we will get a few feedback for staff about how to improve this process for next time. Because I'd like to start perhaps, aim into those three positions with just clarity. It looks like the Malle Center Trust Fund, the Police Pension, the Transportation Board, and the Water and Sewer Board. Some of those we don't have applicants for, of course. Does anybody have a preference on where to start? Or have any issues with what I just kind of have as far as process?
The one other issue that came up was select the ranking of the issues. Some of the people told me that's why they didn't put in more than one application because it wasn't my one ranked it and we kept doing it back until that quarter. So you might want to check about that too. So some of the ranking things.
Yeah, it seems some applicants had some differing levels of success. Maybe it was their work position. That's also something we're able to do that and some we're not.
So if you just look into that.
Yes.
For my, they've had that problem too. We're doing this first.
And that's however it unfolds. And what it laid out is discussing these positions here.
As we're picking them, then I thought it might be a good idea to remember that sometimes the ranking things did almost come off. So it's not about the useful information for you to know that some people were having that problem as you're trying to pick. Is it not? Oh, you were just relying? I'm sorry. I thought it was coming. Sorry.
Hello?
Okay, thank you. Were you back on? Okay, sorry about that. We had some audio issues.
Elena, well, it isn't really that important. We got it worked out. It's okay.
So we'll start with some of these positions. I'll just go down the list then if nobody has a preference on which one to start with. Again, we'll start with Malle Center. That's the first that I saw. Was there anybody for the Malle Center Trust Fund besides Bobby Harris, I believe, who we?
The Malle Center Trust Fund had to be recommended.
Yeah, they have to.
Recommend somebody?
That's correct. The Parks and Recreation Commission needs to recommend a person to you. Both applicants, Bobby Harris as well as Robert Stevenson, have been presented to them and they're going to do their, make that choice at their next meeting, which is this month in February.
And then it'll come back to us.
It'll come back to you at that point in time once they make the recommendation.
Will it come back in time for an appointment at our next formal meeting?
I don't believe so. Because the next Parks and Recreation Commission meeting is Thursday, the twenty, later this month. Let me look.
Not very familiar with what the Malle Center Trust Fund issues are currently. I assume that we think that they can wait through February. Okay.
They're talking about, they're talking about the hearing loop, which they want to do a survey anyway. And they're talking, they approved a hot drink vending machine. That's really about all that's on there right now.
Okay. Thank you for the update. And hearing from Councilmember Yates that we think we can wait, that sounds like an appropriate timeline. We will approve those members then at our first meeting in March, in my mind, assuming their recommendations come forward.
March 6.
Okay, great. Great, that takes care of Malle Center Trust Fund. Let's move on to, well, Parks and Rec was just a youth. We had no youth applicants. So we'll move on to Police Pension Board.
No, Parks and Rec should have been another. Was it another?
It's kind of what I thought too, and I got a little clarity from the city manager prior to the meeting. Let's get a little clarity on that issue.
Staff did look into this specifically, Allison, and she apologized. She had a family emergency and had to go home early today. We looked at, into this and the information that you have before you that was in the packet this evening is accurate. The only thing that was troublesome was the fact that the school board, they send a representative that is, sits on this as well. But yeah, the information you have in your packet is accurate after looking through it, after going through, forward and examining the materials through the charter as well as the ordinances. You have, I think you have what is accurate at this point in time.
It's two plus one. And so it was one plus one before. Allison, they had inappropriately put the liaison person in as a member instead of a liaison. So it's correct on there. Allison changed it to two plus the youth member.
Correct.
Okay, so two plus one is the one youth plus one. Is that what you're calling that?
That's what I'm understanding here, yes.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity. And just for the public's benefit, I apologize, our mics didn't start very well at the beginning. I did just want to notify the public. Councilmember Russell had told me that she had a, her daughter was ill and needed to be out of town, so I just wanted to let folks know. And thoughts and prayers are with her. Mayor Pro Tem Gillett would not be participating apparently in the study session tonight, but will be joining us for our regular session.
And just so that you remember, we knew that information on the additional member. So I believe we already have that vacancy filled. So we knew at the study session that we did this.
Okay. Yeah, I apologize. That was just a little confusing to me.
There was just no youth member that applied.
I thought that there was an additional spot since we were moving that school board person to a non-voting, so I got a little confused there.
There was. They just took care of it that night for us. So she had.
Yeah, and we appreciate the analysis that Councilmember Berantine put into looking at this too, because it really helped us to sharpen up our focus on looking at the ordinances for each of these to follow practices that haven't been followed many years.
Some of them, I think, for more than a decade. This isn't your issue.
No, no.
And why wouldn't you think that it was handled right before? So Allison did a beautiful job getting all that taken care of.
Thank you. Moving on to our next one was Police Pension Board. I don't think we had any applicants for that, did we?
No.
No, unfortunately. And that's one in which mayor, both that and the firefighter pension board, we really need to go out and find someone who understands that a little bit because both of those vacancies are going to be pretty critical over the next year to have those filled. They need to understand, you know, the studies that go into looking at retirement, actuarial tables, those types of things in studies.
That was a little, a little bit more iffy on checking how, what members, some members are voted amongst their group and so there aren't term limits and so, I mean, they have a different plan there. So we might want to look at that one a little bit more on exactly, maybe working with them on how they want to pursue this.
Right.
And get the information on exactly what the setup of the board is so that that's a little clearer. I wouldn't blame Allison on, I mean, I couldn't.
The difficulty with that is that.
Were they one down this entire last year?
Yeah, and that's on the Police Pension Board.
And we were able to function through last year. I mean, there wasn't any quorum problems. We were able to approve the plan, those type of things. So it was still able to function.
But wasn't Condry on there and he was?
Yeah, he's retired, he just retired. And so now that creates somewhat of an issue in that there are no more, I don't believe there are any active members that could still be in the old higher pension, and this is what this board is. It's just like the fire. There's no new members coming into the old higher fire plan. And so it becomes difficult to grab somebody. And unfortunately, the only person who could serve on the old higher fire plan, I believe, would be Richard Patao, who we just recently hired back as a fire inspector. So we get to look at the rules.
I think we really need to look at what that's put together and put a little bit more information into how we're going to handle that.
Both of them should be able to function unless somebody else resigns or unfortunately dies. So we need to look at that.
So let's try to recruit some folks, I think is the bottom line to this. Let's see if we can't get some folks to apply next round.
Yeah.
You know, folks who are retiring, you know, I guess are probably great candidates if they're in this whole plan.
Yep.
Awesome. So question then, are you going to take responsibility for that or?
Yeah, this evening I'm taking notes and I will work with Allison Carney tomorrow when she's back in, she's able to be back in tomorrow, to look into these rules and regs on the fire and police pension so we can get back some information. What I'll do is.
If June, we'll vote on.
Yeah, we'll issue a memorandum of findings. So you have that shortly.
Yeah, some of them, they may be able to take care of internally depending on how, but with the split, it's a little hard to tell. So if you get the rules in there.
We'll get that from Carol in our retirement area.
Thank you for that. Moving on is Transportation Board. I believe we only had one applicant who named it as a second or third choice, which was Robert Elstrom, who we already have penciled in for the Board of Adjustment and Appeals.
And then Kathy Hakey. It was one of the, when I was trying to find out what she had given, she was the one where we didn't have the application. And then it got done with no, so.
She wasn't marked as applying for that in the little spreadsheet, but you had her down for interest.
Well, she was asked to go ahead and give some of that information after, and that's what I was, that's what I was told.
And we have her set for anywhere else?
No. But that's up to you guys. I have no.
I'm trying to look for her application.
Oh.
So.
We got her.
There was nothing, there was nothing ever.
We're just talking about the ones that applied for it. So she had mentioned it. I don't know what happened with how she did her application. I'm just giving you information. Don't care what they put around there or not. It's up to you guys.
Any thoughts on Hakey or on leaving this potentially vacant? This is an alternate position, so I don't know if anybody wants to give us an update on transportation, if they feel like they can survive, or if this is a much-needed appointment.
It's not crucial that that position gets filled at this moment. So.
Have any preference on her or leaving it vacant?
I think I'd prefer a vacancy at the moment.
Yeah.
Anybody else want to weigh in on this?
I would kind of agree. I think it gives people more of an opportunity, one, for them to get the system down for the applications better, and then more people will know exactly what's available and what's not available that might not, it was kind of a little confusing this time. And now that they've got it all squared away, I think the next round would be so much clearer for people.
Did we advertise for a transportation vacancy this time and just didn't get a lot of interest? Or do you know if they were included in the initial ask for applicants?
That's a good question, Mayor, and I can't answer that definitively. I believe that the system showed vacancies, but again, as has been pointed out, we had some, we had some irregularities with that. So I'm not certain that that position, particular position was advertised.
So all I'm saying is I'm weighing in on that. I'd be okay with leaving the alternate positions open rather than trying to do all of this, so.
I'm okay with that if others want to weigh in. Councilmember Olson?
It might have been, I mean, on both of the sheets, the one that we got at the very beginning that was incorrect, that had one on there.
Yeah.
And so did the next one. And Robert Elstrom, Elstrom did apply for it, so it was one of those he checked off. So I'm fine with leaving it because we don't have clear ideas of what's going on there. I mean, as long as you think they can get along without one.
I think so.
We have till June.
Okay. Moving on to our last is Water and Sewer Board alternate. Let's see. We had a couple of applicants for this. Elstrom, Timothy Johnson, Jim Woodward, Coeen Dickerson.
We already had Timothy Johnson in the vacancy. According to the sheet that we.
Yes, thank you. I was just looking over who applied for it. So yeah, we have three other applicants. Coeen we have in a spot. Who's the other person? Elstrom we have in a spot.
Excuse me?
You know, when it comes to the water board.
Thank you. Sorry, I'll come right back to you. Go ahead, Steve.
When it comes to the water board.
I wasn't looking.
It is a position that really needs to have somebody with some good knowledge of what's going on. And I know that Mr. Woodward has, is sitting on some other boards. He's expressed that he would step down from other boards. But when it comes to institutional knowledge, understanding what they do, having to deal with all of the various things, he truly is the most qualified applicant, period, bar none. No one else even comes close.
Other thoughts? Councilmember Berantine?
This would be his fifth board and he did, we either have a policy and no matter how great somebody is, then we make sure that we mentor other people so that they become great too. But to go ahead and have a policy and then cherry pick people that you're particularly fond of or that you think would do a great job instead of allowing the process to happen is probably not a good thing to start happening. This would be his fifth board. He sits on four boards already. And he did mention that he would be willing to go ahead and get off of one board, but we had over 30 people apply. We had another position on this board that was not noticed. And so that we found out in the process of doing all this stuff. And we need to stick to the process so that we in the future have more people that are qualified to do this. Now, if Mr. Woodward would like to step down from all of the other boards that he is on and go ahead and do this one, since it is a very critical board and it is important and has a lot of sway, then, you know, then that's a decision that he could make. But I think that we're setting ourselves up on a slippery slope of going ahead and then telling people that if they want to go ahead and a better board that they'd rather be on and not do the commitments for the ones that there aren't is kind of a, is kind of dangerous. We're looking at the alternate position for this where we have somebody who has experience, who served several years on a water board, water and sanitation board before, and that's the person that's filling that vacancy. So I'm not sure that this is that critical to go ahead and do at this time.
Thank you.
And maybe that would give us an opportunity to see if Mr. Woodward between now and then wants to step down from all of his other boards, then maybe we could leave, at least have some process for putting the boards in, filling the board positions that he leaves open.
Let's move to Mr. Keck real quick. He just wants to interject before I move on to Councilmember Martinez.
Yeah, just as a point of order two on that, asking him to do that right now would be deleterious to the appointments that you've made because none of them are advertised to know that his other spots would be vacant. So I'd have a problem with the council deciding that because then it creates an unfairness for the rest of the community, but also.
I have to clarify, that's not what I was advocating. I said if between, if we left this alternate position open.
Yeah.
And if between now and the June, he made a decision that he wants to get rid of it, we would actually be able to advertise those other spots.
Right.
And do it in a process, so I.
No, I agree with what you're saying.
That would, that would be very concerning. But I'm also.
I think you're both clear here. Let's move on to Councilmember Martinez.
No.
Thanks, thank you.
I was going to also support leaving Jim on this as the alternate because of his background of information with that. But I was going to bring up the same point, that if we're going to move forward with folks only being able to serve on one, we need to come up with a better process, skipping to the end of our conversation, about what that looks like to have somebody choose one and then freeing up other spots on the other boards and commissions that they may be leaving vacant so that we're not leaving holes in other places. So maybe that's just one thing we can touch on when we talk about how to improve the process.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Olson?
This is, this is why I asked if we were going to be doing more about how we'd put this together because of this one. So that's why I asked earlier. But anyway, I do, I agree with you on this one, I do. I think that we need to hold this alternate until this gets figured out and we are really clear with everyone what's going to happen next. So if he wants to apply and he knows that that's what our policy is, then he does have the ability to step down from as many as we say he would have to and then reapply. So I am pleased with who we have in there. I think Timothy Johnson had a very strong backing to be able to do this. So I think it's the only, as much as Jim would be great at this and has the background, I think it's going to be helpful to overall process. But I agree with her on the process. We got to make it really clear.
Sure.
I think some people are saying you can be on one or two, and others are saying, no, you can't be on any, you can only be on one. And so we got to make it really, really clear what we're saying.
And I think what would be helpful, if we're into the process discussion, I don't want to interrupt what Councilmember Yates was going to say. I think it would be helpful is that we kind of put into narrative form what the council would, this council would desire to see happen and say, thou shalt only serve on one board and commission at a time. So you can adopt that somehow, so that that becomes part of your policy manual or something so that that moving forward would dictate then how appointments are made. I think that'd be helpful. Because right now, it's basically, council has loosely agreed to that, but it's lore and legend and not set in stone, and we'd like to see that set in stone.
I agree. This is a policy issue I think we need to take up and get some clarity on for this issue and agreed that the process itself probably needs to be discussed because if we're asking these people to make that determination prior to applying, they could end up with nothing if we don't appoint them to the spot that they want. And so, you know, in my mind, you know, this process of after or during that process is probably the appropriate time to consider that. With Jim, I, you know, have great confidence that he can fulfill most of these roles in a very competent manner. I guess I worry though that the ones he maybe want to give up are ones that we kind of need people on. And, you know, Water, I don't think has a huge attraction issue that some of the others, you know, like NERP and, you know, I don't know exactly what all he's on, but I know that some of them were kind of not the ones that were the most popular to apply for. So do we want to try to come to some consensus on this, you know, policy? Or do we want to try to have that conversation another day?
Another day.
Yeah, and have some, you know, just come to some. So is your preference then, Councilmember Berantine and Councilmember Olson, just to leave this open at the time?
That's what I would, yeah, I agree with what Linda's saying. I mean, that's exactly what I was saying. That gives him an opportunity to make a decision of whether he wants to or not. If he doesn't, if he decides that the other boards are more important to him, then we're having some equality across it. It gives it enough time to, and if he decides to get rid of the other boards, then we go ahead and fill those positions in June.
I think, you know, I could support leaving it vacant, but only if we came up with a process that was very clear to somebody like Jim, you know what I mean, about what his options are. Again, I just don't feel comfortable saying that, oh yeah, you could, you could resign from all of these and then reapply and you might not get it, you know what I mean? And then where is it, you know what I mean? So maybe we should have a little bit of discussion about how we can move this thing forward at a later date.
That does put a little bit different spin on it, and you are correct. If people give up their board for something and they go and apply for it, you're right, there isn't a guarantee that they're going to get it. So if you're trying to say that if he gives up his other boards that he's guaranteed to get it, I don't know how we, how we ever would have a policy that says that because if you do that for somebody and you think that they're really well qualified and you like them, and somebody else does it and you don't think they're well qualified for the board that they're giving up all their other stuff for, then that's not a very equitable situation.
Agreed.
But I think we need to at least have a study session on how we're going to handle this, who can do the boards. Because I agree, we're not hurting anything to leave it open for five months now and have the opportunity and see what they want to do.
I also think there might be a third way through this, and we just need to spend some time thinking about it because it may not be an all or nothing. So it doesn't mean that we couldn't know that he's going to resign from those if he gets it and that there's some way to do that. But that would allow for other people then to apply to the positions that maybe he would vacate in a timely matter so that they know too. So we just have to sit and think it through.
Okay. I guess I'm comfortable with that. Again, I just, you know, I, you know, I think that Jim is well qualified to do this job and so I guess I'm just thinking if it's necessary to have him in there, I'd prefer to have him in there. But hearing what we're saying about, you know, trying to come up with a policy that makes sense on this for folks like Jim, and perhaps the answer is that, you know, this one board and commission only applies to folks as they apply in new terms, you know what I mean, that we don't have to worry about this issue retroactively. But perhaps this is another item to laundry list on some of our policy and procedure items that we're going to be starting here next month and along with a lot of other issues that we need to chat about on policy and procedures, but we could add this to the list perhaps? Is that acceptable to council?
I wrote that down, Mayor, for a study session on this. Would it be helpful if we as staff put together a document that basically talks about timing of appointments, timing of schedule for a year, you know, this, this rule of that, you know, one, one person per board and commission, those types of things? And also clearly enunciate what each board and commission is, how many representatives, how the process goes so that it's all in one document?
Yes.
Okay. I'll put that together and perhaps, and I'd like to maybe talk a little bit later then with council or maybe get some consensus direction now. If that's the first thing you want to discuss later this month.
You know what I think we probably need to do is come up with a laundry list of issues for that policy and procedures discussions because I know we have several items and maybe what we need to do is begin to prioritize those as Allison comes on board.
Yeah.
And perhaps Allison might have some feedback. She might say, hey, I'm ready to tackle A, B, and C, but give me a couple of weeks on, you know, X, Y, and Z or something, you know what I mean? So my thought was that when she came on board, this was one of the initial conversations we were going to have with her and say, hey, here's kind of some of the laundry list of issues we're going to start to take on.
Okay.
When do you feel comfortable or how do you see this process? You know, get some feedback from her as well. Any other thoughts on that?
It would be nice if the documents were simpler. I don't know how to make them more simple, but they're just a little cumbersome. Another way to look at the, this awkward time of if people go off because they're going to go on to something else would be to, to allow citizens to, to mark those that aren't open, to say, if, if between now and the time we start interviewing, there are opportunities that somebody, you know, we had that this time, people resigned before we even got started. So we know there's another opening. Then have them check them off so there's a second level.
Okay.
I don't know, but.
Yeah, that's a nightmare. I mean, I talked a little, I mean, the.
The interfaces.
And whether they stay interested or not, or whether all of a sudden they go, well, I was interested in urban renewal, but now Parks and Rec came open and so that's, because it's kind of an ever-changing thing, but maybe there's a way to.
What's wrong with having them check all that they're interested in?
Yeah, we can do that and then they can just need to prioritize. Yeah, prioritize it.
Yeah.
We'll do the best we can. I mean, the tool is, actually, we can do it, but just for you it'd become unwieldy because it would be like, hey, their first choice was this, but now that Parks and Rec's open, they really want that. You might have a lot of that administratively burdensome for you.
It's a good segue though to the feedback. I think what we're hearing though is we'd like some opportunity for them to give us feedback, the applicants themselves, about which is their first choice and which is their second choice. So I suppose I would open up the floor to other pieces of feedback about how they saw the process going, areas that need to improve. Some areas I saw were, you know, questions in the application, you know, how we handle the procedure, how many meetings we do to come up with some consensus. Obviously, we broke this over three or four nights now, and so, you know, obviously this is a little more comfortable for us in a bite-sized manner. But I'll open the floor up perhaps for some of that feedback now. I have a few items I had in my mind. If maybe I, if you want me to, I can kick those off if nobody has anything. One of them was, you know, the questions on the application themselves. One that we always really had seen historically and that we all liked was, how long have you been in the city of Inglewood?
Right.
What else?
Well, that's a good one because that's a requirement for a couple of boards.
Amen.
Have to be at least, so.
Well, it still asked them to give their location and where they live, but it didn't ask them how long they'd been at that location.
Right.
Trying to look through the application, what were some of the other questions? Feel free to just throw them out if anybody's got one.
We added that one in, Mayor, subsequent to the last application. So next go around, that should be in there.
I'm not sure that the districts are always accurate. I saw a couple that I thought seemed to be inaccurate.
Right.
Trying to look through the application. What were some of the other questions? Feel free to just throw them out if anybody's got one.
We added that one in mayor subsequent to the, the last application. So next go around, that should be in there.
I'm not sure that the districts are always accurate. I saw a couple that I thought seemed to be inaccurate. And so I don't know if we're asking them to self-select which district they're in or how that's working, but it seems that there's some inaccuracies there.
We've changed the, you know, the districts, so a lot of people don't know.
Exactly.
Maybe that's something that we can have it auto-populate where they put their address in.
There's only a couple where that's an issue. I think Election Commission is the only one that requires some diversity of districts.
That's correct.
But it's still maybe something that council members find helpful or no. Seeing no major feelings on that, I'll suggest that, you know, perhaps that's something that we could figure out on our own or something, you know, rather than asking them to self-select. Other feedback?
There seemed to be a, just a process of communication between council and your office. So when we see mistakes or how, how would you like those handled?
Yeah, by all means, please feel free to reach out.
It seemed like it went on forever.
Yeah. And this, again, this time, we went from an all-paper to an automated system. And clearly, there were errors made with that happening. And not to mention the fact that we learned a lot as staff by going back in and saying, gosh, we need to read the charter specifically for this because this isn't the process that's been used since I've been here. But yeah, absolutely. If you see some other error you think's a problem, let us know.
So I wonder if timing will matter for that. And so that we have enough time to look at. I think when, what happened was, I know, Lorette, you had stuff that you were, it was a holiday on Monday again and...
Yeah.
If you didn't get it.
Well, hopefully we won't have that issue again.
I don't know if we can get another week ahead, but...
Yeah. Because you had the, we received the packet prior to the deadline.
Right.
And so there was, we were never going to be able to see all of the applicants if they, even if they applied on time. So...
We'll work out the calendar.
It has to be prior to the, enough, prior, far enough in, after they apply.
Yep.
Yeah. So probably the distribution probably shouldn't happen to get all the applicants and then, you know, rather than going through a couple of shots there. One other item was the days of availability of the week. That seemed to not be functioning. Most had selected every day of the week. And so it's like, wait, why are we here then? And so, and a couple of people were able to get that functionality to work the way they wanted it to. So maybe that's just a user interface issue.
I think some of that probably too was the overlap in systems. Like some of the folks applied when we had our old system and some applied when we had the new one.
Okay.
And maybe just the verbiage of that question could be a little clearer because it seems like there was some confusion from...
Verbiage of what question?
Of...
What days of the week are you available?
Which days of the list, days of the week that you would be unavailable for meetings. Some people checked all of them.
A lot checked, a lot, all of them, yeah. So...
Maybe they thought it said available.
Maybe, maybe.
So maybe we could just clean that up a little bit. I also thought the kind of personal statement of why you're interested in serving on this board or commission, I think it would be nice if we could require that. Only because some provided a lot, some didn't provide any. And I think it's helpful to kind of hear just in their own words before we meet with them, kind of why they're interested.
Thank you. We can do that.
Are you suggesting like a minimum 50 words or something like that?
It doesn't have to be a minimum, but something, I think just that they put something in there.
Yeah, that box has got something. Yeah, I hear you. I like that idea too.
We also had some, I don't know how you do this, but we had some kind of resume things that were, people listed what they did, but never who they worked for. You can't even tell whether they were, that was true or not. I mean, what really were their professions? Who did they work for? For how long? I think that's helpful to know on some of these with some background. Some of them doesn't matter at all. But if we're going to ask that question, then let, maybe, maybe there'd be some fields that they fill in. I don't know.
Okay. Following up on that, there was two issues. One is that when folks are applying
for ACE, I feel like we need to be clear about, you need to be a manager or an owner of a business that's located in the city of Inglewood.
Yeah.
And the other thing is that some folks just mark themselves down as self-employed or home-based business or something. And we should get a little bit of detail about what is their business type or what is the name of their business perhaps. That way we at least get an idea of what type of industry or whatever they're in.
Do you have payroll? Do you do, you know, do you have EIN?
Yeah, self-employed covers a lot of ground, needless to say, as we all know.
We're not talking about somebody that calls their hobby a business.
So maybe if, you know, if they check self-employed, there's a box or something that says, what's the name of your business? Or, you know, something like that. But some, we found that, you know, some just said self-employed and that was a little ambiguous.
We used to have a separate one for ACE, right? But we're not doing that. Is there, should we have a bit more of a dropdown for that one?
We can see if we can get that functionality added just for that. I mean, because there's some idiosyncrasies with each of the boards, really.
Right.
I mean, some need to have some experience or licensing or whatever. But we'll see what we can do with that. See if there's that functionality in this program.
If nothing else, just getting clarity from the business types would probably help. We can help make those determinations. But at minimum, we should be looking through and making sure because I feel a little disappointed when they come in for the interview and we're just discovering it then, you know.
Right. Got you. Okay.
Sorry, did I cut you off?
No, it's fine. I was just going to say also another nuance for the Malley Center Trust Fund, maybe a note on there that they need to be amended or, you know...
Yeah, when we, when we put together the policy for the council, we'll have that in there for, for any of them also, for all the boards and commissions if they have that type of requirement.
Cool.
I, I think it works for them to give us the application and then we forward it. We just would have to do it in a timely manner.
Quick, yeah, quick fashion. Yeah.
But even just having these disclaimers that you put on the top of some of these would be helpful if ACE just had one that says, you know, must be business owner and manager.
Right.
Just a basic disclosure. Even if we can't build it into the IT system so that they can apply, at least we can say, hey, it's on there and we're at least notifying applicants.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's see. Any other feedback? Did we think breaking the interviews into two was adequate?
I think it was necessary.
It was certainly necessary. I'm asking if it was, if we should have done three nights perhaps, you know, if, if we want to get more in-depth with some of these applicants. You know, right now, we've got 10-minute interviews with a little bit of breaks and we were able to do about 17 a night or somewhere in that range. But it was still a full, full evening. Councilmember Berentine, you want to hop in on that?
It, it was weird because I was watching the Littleton City meeting and they had 30 people too. They had the exact same number of applicants that we did. It was kind of weird. But they did break theirs into three nights and didn't, and didn't go past. But I think that they used that, that...
And the fourth night for consensus?
No, they, I think they used that third night as, as the kind of study session talk thing as well. But I just thought that was funny that they had.
Hmm. About the same.
No, not about, exactly.
Well, we actually had over 30. Remember, we had, we had 30 when we got the packet prior to the deadline.
And it was 39 by the time you...
Yeah, so...
Oh, it was.
The level of civic engagement is up, you know? So I love that.
Would you like to have that included in the policy too? Just predicate a number of applicants or, because obviously...
Yeah. I mean, honestly, I think we need to stick to about 15 a night. Seems about comfortable. Wouldn't you guys say?
They did the same thing where they didn't go past nine. And I think that's respectful of people. So I liked, I liked this better.
Yeah, I think this process was much more comfortable for us as a council. And, you know, if we can kind of keep it as a general rule of thumb that we're capable of doing about 15 a night. And hey, if it's 17, I think we could squeeze it. But, you know, we probably don't want to get up to 20 a night.
Okay.
Other feedback on consensus processes or moving these things forward? You know, obviously, in this situation, what we're doing is we're formalizing the appointments we came to consensus on last time. So we'll actually have two nights of approvals. And we did not invite the applicants to come and collect their certificate tonight. The folks who were approved tonight will get an invite for the 20...
First.
21st, thank you.
Remember, it's a Tuesday.
And the folks who were approved on the 21st will get an invite for the 6th. And so that's how we're handling the certificate distribution and that kind of thing. Is everybody comfortable with that?
I was just waiting to give some more feedback.
Yep, go ahead, Councilmember Olson.
So I, I'm fine with that for tonight and everything going on with the, the amount of time. If you remember, we had planned on doing two nights and the second night we were going to make all of our decisions. We made that change that night. And so I do think there can be clarity about that and making sure, that's got to be planned pretty far ahead to get on our schedules because we ended up with not everybody being able to make everything. Part of it was illness, but...
Sure.
But I think that's going to take a lot of planning on our part to do that in June if that's when we're doing it again.
Okay.
She's got a good point because we don't know how many people are going to apply.
We don't. So we set up alternate nights with the night to decide.
We'll build that in.
But I think it's much wiser to not decide after we've made 15 to 17 interviews. Just move on. Go home, come back.
And penciling in a, a potential special meeting date might not be a terrible idea that we could all agree upon in June, knowing that we're probably going to have over 20 or at least over 15.
If we don't, we can always cancel.
Exactly. Councilmember Yates?
I don't know if this is appropriate time. But before we, before we end this up, I do want to talk about a specific applicant before we...
That's fine. We've got plenty of time still. So we can loop back around to that once we conclude with this section. Is there any other feedback on processes? Councilmember Martinez?
I just wanted to address the timing as well. I feel like we need to give ourselves plenty of time so that we can make sure that all this is done in a timely manner and we have enough time to decide and comb through all the applicants. And so that no boards and commissions have meetings where they have a bunch of vacancies so that the new folks can start right in and we don't have any meetings. Like this month in February, a lot of them are going to have...
Be short.
Yeah, they'll be short. So just if we could avoid that if possible. I think just more timing and earlier timing would, would help us out a lot.
Agreed. You know, in my mind, we probably should have had these approved in our last meeting in January so that there is no disruption in their ability to function. I think we're relatively comfortable this time around. But, you know, moving forward, that could become a bigger issue. I'll go back to Councilmember Martinez and then Councilmember Olson.
Yeah, just one more thing. I just wonder what the process is like as far as reaching out to the folks. Once they, so they're invited, they get their certificates. Because I think it's, it's really exciting for them. And I want to make sure that we do everything we can to get as many of them to come to that as possible. So we can kind of thank them in advance.
Right. And I think what we'll do is we'll obviously contact them, call them and actually invite them. But also see what materials that we can provide them from their, either the staff liaison to the group so they can, like you said, they're ready to go when they need to go. If there's a specific manual for what they do or something of that nature. So we'll, we'll work that way too. Maybe even have the chairperson reach out to them.
That'd be nice.
Yeah.
Councilmember Olson?
Good point.
The other thing would be how to make the time with us quick and good for them. I would suggest that, I don't feel like I have to ask a question for every single person. So maybe we just decide on what are the five basic questions we always get asked each time and then rotate who asked them. I don't mind. Because I think one of them was, why do you want to do this? And why this one in particular?
We did have some favorites.
That's always going to be asked. That's great. But let's agree on maybe four or five that we agree. And then you can ask other ones. If, somebody's going to pique your interest in something. And I think that's fine to follow up on something that isn't planned. But that might help with the time to let them just keep talking rather than us.
I agree. You know, it seemed that we had kind of four favorites. I'm going to try to look for that list of questions and see if maybe we can agree on that. Because we do have a few minutes here. There were six questions provided to us in our packet. What prompted you or motivated you to apply was one that we asked everybody, I think. What knowledge or skills do you bring? Describe your past experience. You've worked in group and sometimes differing perspectives. It seemed to get asked a lot. Sorry, I'm just going to read these and I'll come to you. What do you most like about Inglewood? I thought was an excellent question that we asked most applicants. I'd like that to be included. The boards and commissions that you're interested in meet one time a month. What obstacles might you encounter in participation? And then finally, how would serving on this board benefit you as a citizen, either personally or professionally? And that one, we asked some folks. Councilmember Berentine?
I think that Lynda's right. As long as we don't go back to the first time we did it was too strict. Like you can only ask those questions and then they bring something else up. And so if we had, I think probably three, at the most four. And then if there was some question that kind of was burning that we wanted to ask separate from that. But I think we have to kind of keep it actually to maybe three. And then maybe one or two specific to the people that are interviewing, I think would be better. And I really would like some additional time to kind of think about what those three would be rather than try and do it tonight like this. But I do agree that as long as we have some flexibility, some flexibility, because not, the charter doesn't fit all of the boards and commission types. So each one's kind of a little different. So sometimes to be able to ask a little bit different question, then I would agree with, with Lynda about that. That's fine.
Thank you.
I, I agree too. And I would, oh, did you, I'm sorry.
No, I'm fine.
Three is fine with me. I think the less, the better because then you have more opportunity to talk. And I would try not to ask them questions that we already have the information on.
Mm-hmm.
So I mean, like how, are you available every night or whatever? I mean, if they've, unless it hasn't been filled out. But I think we did that a few times where I thought, we don't need to be asking that.
And I think if the functionality of our application improves, we, I agree, we can skip that one.
Right, right.
I guess the only one I really liked was the, what do you like about, what do you most like about Inglewood? What would you like to see improved? I feel like that's one that we can ask everybody. It's just great feedback. And so we can pick that discussion up later unless others want to say which one they really love too. Councilmember Yates? Did you have something else?
Not on that issue.
Okay. Anybody else have any other feedback on the process before we move to Councilmember Yates on discussion of a particular applicant? Councilmember Yates?
Okay. This would be in regards to the boards and adjustments and appeals, the alternate position. That particular position requires a level head, someone that will reason and take all sides into consideration. My biggest concern is that our last study session meeting, the person that we're looking at to fill that, the police officer had to come over because they were so upset about something that was said, that it, it made our police officer cautious and had to ask, is everything okay? You know, so I don't really feel that this person would be the right person for that particular board.
Councilmember, I don't know if it was Olson or Berentine, Berentine.
The, since we don't decide this here, and we've gone through this before, if somebody wishes to pull a name, it would be done on the dais when, at the time that we vote. We don't come to consensus here. We did this list and...
I'll be happy to do it during the dais.
I...
Okay, let's just let her conclude and then, that's fair.
So if there's any concern about somebody, it would, it would be brought up as if anybody has any concern about anybody, then that's the procedure that would be done. And I feel a little uncomfortable having that kind of conversation in, in a study session like this about a specific individual. Regardless of whether somebody gets named or not, we have the list in front of us and the person is identified. And I find that a little, that's a little awkward. So if we have that, it needs to happen in the, in the, in the dais under the proper procedures.
Generally agreed. I mean, you know, obviously, we've got somebody on the agenda here for this position. Obviously, you know, with them taking on some meetings in February, I don't know what the schedule is for board and adjustment and appeals. Can I get perhaps a reminder of when their next meeting date is?
It's coming up. It's actually, if it's either this Wednesday or next.
Okay. And this is the alternate position?
I think it's this, I think it is this Wednesday. They have, there are two cases, I think.
Thank you. Councilmember Yates?
I do understand where Ms. Berentine, Councilmember Berentine is coming from on this. Although this is something I was bringing forward during the study session. So if there was an additional discussion or concern that we needed to talk about beforehand, we could. I mean, we made some consensus decisions if we were going to bring them forward to council. I was intending on trying to keep from a certain amount of embarrassment in a more formal public venue. But if that's what I need to do, I will bring it forward.
Certainly, I think that, you know, it would be required at this point because of the notice posting that we've done of who we're considering in the other room for these, for this position. We have done this before. And that is, I think, why we're choosing not to invite the applicants tonight to pick up their certificates. Remember in the past, they would come the same night we were approving them and we had an issue with one and that became a bigger issue. So, you know, you know, that's why I think we're asking the applicants to come at a future date. Other comments on this issue? Councilmember Berentine? Do you have something else?
I was, I mean, just, I think that since he's agreed to go ahead and do this, and that's fine. I think it's difficult because he was not part of that study session where we decided. I mean, this wasn't just put on by one person. So then my concern would be since Councilmember Yates missed one of the interview sessions and didn't come to the, wasn't in attendance when we made this original list up and participate in that